Bring the meeting to order and Director Cotton, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you so much for coming to the meeting tonight. And just wanted to have a few housekeeping things here. First of all, do we have any members of the media here? Just raise your hand. Nope. Online, do we have any members of the media? Okay, thank you. Please remember to mute your phones. And also, if you wanted to participate during public comment, if you have not yet filled out a card, we'll need you to do that, please. And board members, please remember to turn your mics on and off respectively. At this time, we have Superintendent Cotton, or excuse me, Corden, who will give us the review of the agenda and communication to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Yeah, I'm not sure if that's a promotion or not. Great to see you. Everybody, thank you for being here today. We do want to excuse Director Leone, who's out on a wedding, praying for a wedding tonight, and also excuse tonight on our side of the house, Melissa Roberts and Daniel Littlefield, who won't be joining us tonight. The agenda is published without amendments since its last publication, and so we can move forward without any adjustments to that agenda.
Thank you very much. As we enter into public participation, we have three cards that are filled out. Do we have any online? Doesn't, doesn't look like we have anybody there. So I just want to say a few things. First of all, you have two minutes, and that may not, that's just standard what we have done. That's just our policy, two minutes. But what I want to say to you is, please feel free to email us your entire, whatever it is that you want to say. We do want to hear it. And the other thing is that while speakers may offer objective criticism of operations and programs, the board will not hear personal complaints concerning district personnel or against any person connected with the school system, including students or staff. These are legalities, so we do not name names. So just to let you know that. At this time, Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie will have a timer. She will tell who's, who's next to speak. So just listen, when you come forward, please hit the button, push it on so it's green, and then turn it off when you're completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Minor. First, we'd like to invite up Greg Sullivan.
Just want to thank you for giving me a chance to talk. I, I sent letters to, a couple of letters to all the board members about the loss of my son and how the school district was the one that gave his, his caregiver, his mental health caregiver, ADAPT. All of his care was done inside Roseburg High School, and so that's where you guys come in. But I just want you to know, we moved here because there was a school shooting and, and in New Mexico in December of seventeen, we moved here in eighteen, and we were hoping that there would be compassion and understanding, and, and we have had that. And so I really appreciate, you know, the support that everyone has given. So Jacob and, and our son in, in twenty twenty-three and in, in July, he took his life. He had been under the care of ADAPT for five years, and in, in the, in the last year of his life, he was really mismanaged. There was one incident where in twenty-two, in June of twenty-two, he had, he was assessed for suicide, and he had said repeatedly, over a dozen times, that he would do it. And there was, the caregiver was, was not a licensed therapist, and she said no plan to self-harm. His, his therapist was a rookie, rookie therapist and should have been managed, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and, you know, feel free to present all your thoughts to, to us.
I did.
Yeah, thank you.
I did.
I will say to you, just for those who, this may be your first time, or you've not watched previous board meetings, that the board does not interact with whoever's presenting. We don't ask questions or whatever, but we are listening. So you know, that's not part of the process. But we do have processes for all of these things that you will probably be bringing up. And we are definitely on it, but we will welcome, you know, your emails. So, thank you.
Next, we'd like to invite up Robert Sullivan.
Now it's on, I guess. Sorry about that. So there's really not a reason that Roseburg, with the size of school we have, can't have a program that's successful. It just has to be done, and, you know, hiring a person after you get a certain number of athletes to come out is counterproductive, as opposed to hiring somebody and then building it and like advertising it, hey, we got this going. These two girls here have spent more time in the room than a lot of the kids in the mat room, the high school kids, and they're, both of them can beat several of the high school boys. My daughter's going to be an eighth grader this year, and so she's got to still another year, but, you know, I, it's just, it's something that needs to happen, and the meetings, I've emailed meetings, haven't heard back, you know, multiple conversations, and I just kind of haven't got any response to it. So we're almost to the season now, so if we wait another month or two, we're not going to have a person, and it won't happen. So just want to hopefully get that moving, and, you know, these girls can bring in more. The middle school teams each had several girls last year. So they should have an opportunity to have a schedule that's similar to the boys and get a chance to succeed. The girls last year were left out of some tournaments. There was a tournament at Glide, they didn't even get taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hustleton. Okay, for those who are online who didn't hear what he was advocating for, it is for a girls wrestling team for RHS. So that's what he was talking about. Thank you. Michelle?
That's Mindy Rush. Just make sure that's all lighted. Thanks. It's just so people online can hear you. It's fine. It's okay. It's okay. Totally understand. Green. My name is Mindy Rush, and my children currently attend RHS. My goal here today is to create an urgency for RHS to get ahead coach for the female wrestling team, as well as recruit and encourage our female youth to join the wrestling program. As a mom of a very strong female wrestler, I am becoming very impatient and now asking for help. I have watched my ex-husband ask questions and inquire about this topic since January twenty twenty-four. RHS has responded with little to no knowledge about female wrestling standards and how to create an actual female wrestling team. There were also comments made at the wrestling banquet last year about how they knew very little about females. Last year, at the wrestlers' parent meeting, I asked what it would take to make a girls' team. I was told the answer, I don't know, ten, he said. It's actually just one. I found out later. We could easily have about fifteen to twenty female wrestlers at RHS right now, had someone from the school taken action a year ago. It's been an official sport for two years now. I have yet to see any recruiting or encouragement at RHS to get the girls involved in wrestling at all, as compared to the other high schools in our county. RHS, RHS is known for its amazing wrestling team. Every girl interested in wrestling should want to attend here. Last year, I watched our three female wrestlers at RHS get forgotten and not included in the Glide tournament. I also watched them miss out on two other events. I don't want my daughter to miss out on these opportunities. They need a coach that is a hundred percent dedicated to the girls and their athletic careers. They will lose weight differently in the boys. They have periods, they have different body parts, and require a different approach to coaching. We need someone familiar with girls' USA Wrestling and the scheduling for girls. We need someone who understands the difference in techniques and rules. We need someone that knows what they're doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And?
Not going to happen, girl. I'm just surprised. No? My daughter's great here. She's wrestling, and she's five. And now her's wrestling for several years as well. They spend week at a camp, a class girl by a wrestling academy. From February to September, so they have been putting in their time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. And like I said, please feel free to, to email us with any other information. Okay, is that all we have? Great. Thank you so much. And now we have, are moving on to our consent agenda. You've had the opportunity to look at all of the things that are included into, in it. Surplus items, listing and gifts to the district, and recommendations for hire, and notices of resignation, resignation and retirement. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Let the record show, it is carried unanimously. Moving on to item number two, we have supervisory and confidential employee designations, and Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie, she will present this action.
Thank you, Chair Minor. In compliance with collective bargaining law, the Board of Directors designates by individual names the members of the administrative and supervisory staff. And this is listed on page twenty in your packet. Also designate confidential employees to include the executive and administrative assistants to the superintendent, the three human resources specialists, and the business operations payroll specialist, accounting specialist, and accounting assistant. That is listed on page twenty-one in your packet. We are following collective bargaining law, which requires that public employers designate these supervisory employees, and neither any individual having authority in the interest of the employer, and this is for our supervisory employees, not our confidential employees, to hire, transfer, suspend, lay off, recall, promote, discharge, assign, reward, or discipline other employees. We are asking the board to approve our supervisory as well as our confidential.
To entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five supervisory and confidential employee designations as proposed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
It's kind of, I'm happy for the folks that are no longer showing up on this, because they've retired. Maybe, well, but it is interesting going through the list and so much new names. So we'll miss them.
Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, let the record show, it's passed unanimously. Motion carries. And now we're moving on to item number three, the, the board committee assignment roster for twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I would entertain a motion to approve the, the board committee assignments for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six school year.
I will motion to approve the committee assignments.
Great. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Great. Motion carries. We have a discussion item, number four, nomination window for, for potential OSBA Legislative Policy Committee members. So what this does, it's part of the Oregon School Board Association's primary legislative part, arm of their organization, and they serve as a collective voice for all Oregon public school boards. So this is, they represent the LPC region, and to help, to help polit, publicly, public policy that affect, impacts education. So you would represent the board members as a whole. If you are interested in this, I know we have Director Hammerson that's very interested. If you're interested, it is a process where we as a board would nominate you and actually nominate it to OSBA. It would go forth between, to all of the boards across, or, you know, in our area, and they would vote on who they would like to be the representative for this. So it is a commitment, and if you're interested, let me know. And we can talk. Moving along, we have item number five, English learners in Oregon. This is our required annual report for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, and Michelle Nie, take it away.
The English Language learner report that is contained in your packet on pages twenty-three through seventy-five is an annual publication that's required by ORS three two seven dot zero one six. And we are required to present this yearly to the board. The particular one report is from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. They're always a year behind in bringing the report out. And, and it reports on the financial information for English language learner programs, the objectives and needs of students eligible and enrolled in the English learner program, as well as provides information on the demographics of students in the English language learner program in Oregon. So this is a report about English language learning program in Oregon. In conjunction with that, we like to present our English language learner information for our district. This is the information from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so for last school year. And that you do have a slide in your packet, plus it's up on screen, and I just wanted to point out a few pieces to you. We do have twenty-seven languages spoken in our district. And on this slide, you can see some of those languages. I didn't list all twenty-seven of them, but of the fifty-five hundred plus students that we have enrolled, we do have a number of languages that are spoken here. We have a hundred and sixty-three students that are identified as English, English learners in our district. Sixty of those are active English learner students. Active English learner students means that they are receiving daily instruction in English language acquisition. And that daily instruction is provided by our English language development teachers. We have two elementary teachers and one second teacher. Of those active students, thirty-three are in our elementary schools and twenty-seven are in our secondary schools. We do have a hundred and three students that have exited from English language learner support. And that means that their English language learner acquisition, their acquisition of the English language has grown to the point that they've been able to exit out of having to have daily support, but they are still monitored and checked on by our ELD teachers to make sure that they are We have five students in our district that are identified as migrant ed students. These are students that work in industries that are, that are needed as migrants. Industries, farming typically is working in our farming community here. And we have, and then we have the three English language development teachers that you mentioned. I just wanted to make sure that you, and you were aware of what we had going on in the district and the teaching and learning department. And where the ELD teachers are housed.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the information. We now have the superintendent's report, so Superintendent Corden, take it away.
Thank you very much. See, here we go. All right, um, let's see, pull this up real quick here. Should know how to do this. All right, I have a short report for you tonight. Just talking to a couple of our students back there, like wrapping up summer, it's coming to an end, and I just want to say how excited I am for the start of the year, but want to give huge kudos to our staff and our kids and families. We've had a really great, our summer programs were excellent this year. And I'm super happy with and proud of our kids for showing up, but a lot of students show up and find real value and extended learning this summer. Just as an example, we had two hundred and twenty students from RHS, and they earned three hundred credits over the summer. So pretty powerful, great. We take a look at making sure our kids are on track for graduation, and each kid is sometimes on a little different pathway, and life gets complicated even at a young age for a lot of our students, and and our staff and parents and students showing up to do this work's been really incredible, so just a huge kudos. I often say we've got great, we have great kids and great families and great staff working for us, so I'm grateful for all of them. Our buildings have been busy, even outside of summer school. We've got some capital projects, and our staff's working hard to make sure we can welcome students back here soon and staff back here soon. Also want to let you know there's been, and kudos to Dr. Weber, teaching and learning. They've been hosting lots and lots of professional learning opportunities. This campus has been hopping for several weeks now. If you just drive by a parking lot, it's full. We've had lots of staff members in here spending their summer hours getting the instruction they need, the prep they need, and everything from math, the ELA, to working with students, and so we're really grateful for them, and and if you, if you stop by, it's great just to pop by some of these trainings, just to see the excitement as we get the year started. I want to give you a couple updates on budget. Yeah, please.
It's just a basic question.
Yep.
Of the credits that were recorded, which is wonderful, and the number of students, do we know how many that we put back on track for graduation?
It's a good question, Dave. I don't know if you've got those numbers yet. We okay.
Because some of those students are actually still earning some of those credits, because at the end of summer, depending on the program that they're on, they can still finish maybe the first two weeks of school too, which wouldn't make it for ODE, but for the kid, it would put them in a better situation for graduation. So we moved twenty-two of the, I think forty-four that were at summer school to, from being off track, ninth grader being off track.
Yeah.
On track, and we added the forty-four kids that were there, I think over thirty improved their situation to
Yeah.
Being very, very close.
Oh, that, that's a wonderful result, and that's very positive outcome from summer school. So that's why I was interested.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And again, these are like, these, RHS, I'll pick on RHS for a minute, it's very targeted. So we're looking at students that weren't quite, you know, we're not at sixth credit yet. You know, some of the, some of these students have some challenges and, and and are dealing with some things outside of school that are complicated. And so to get them there actually is, is really a win, and to to have them kind of sustain the learning has been great. We do know there's a high, high correlation. If you're, if you can be on track at the end of your ninth grade year, there's a sense of hope and optimism, you're going to graduate. And so when you're not on track at that ninth grade year, that's six credits at a minimum. You can earn seven and a half. And so, great question and great job, RHS and everybody else involved in that. Great question. All right, let me give you a quick budget update. I've got some, some good news on a couple of things. We'll start with that. Last time we met, there was a bit of wrangling between states and federal governments around some allocated federal funds. There were about six point eight billion dollars that had been, had been allocated but not distributed yet. Those, that funding has been received. We had about a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall within two funds. That, the funding has been released, so we're grateful to the federal administration for the release of those funds. And for us, that means about a four hundred thousand dollar that gap that was there because of not having received has been, has been closed, so we're super excited about that. We also have been busy in the grant process, and I'm excited to let you know that we did receive a tribal attendance promising practices grant, and we will be hiring a halftime licensed position. It's going to specifically, they'll do a variety of things, but specifically, the position is intended to approve and, intended to help with connection and attendance among tribal students. Additionally, there was a one point two million dollar, I believe, grant. Comprehensive, Oregon Comprehensive literacy state development grants, a big probably a longer name than it should be, that's going to provide some additional supports and literacy at the secondary level. And this pairs great with the work we're doing around our CKLA adoption at ELA, as well as our other grant we have with some of the early learning work. We will be hiring out of this grant a halftime literacy coach as well. So these are effectively some of the last licensed positions we'll be hiring, and it's important for the board to realize we did some reductions last year, and sometimes when people see these positions come up, they're like, well, how did this, how is this position being hired? These are both coming through grant funding. We also wanted to let the board know too, we were also secured a grant. This will start at, at RHS. It's a three-year grant through OmniAlert, and this grant is, is using, it's, it's a firearms detection grant that integrates with our current camera systems. And server's been installed. It'll be primarily RHS. I'd like to see if we could also at least do the entrance cameras at the middle schools, and this will provide some detection in case there's firearms being carried or entered into the school. So more information on that soon, and we'll also communicate some information with parents on that. So a little bit on some grant funding. Still on hold. This kind of sits in the federal bucket of holds is, is the board knows, and our community may remember, we did qualify for a significant grant through the Renew America Schools Grant. This was a two and a half million dollar grant that will provide HVAC at both Jolene and Eastwood. We did receive some funding to begin some of the engineering processes, but there's still no status on the update on that Renew America Grant that again would be an HVAC specific grant. There were seven school districts across Oregon and ten schools, and we had two of those ten schools, which was exciting. Keep you in the loop on that if I hear more. Yep.
For the tribal attendance and the literacy grants, how many years are those?
We have a three-year grant with the tribal, well, it's a Biennium grant. Okay, so excuse me, so through, okay, twenty-five, twenty, we, we expect twenty-five, twenty-seven, we expect positive results with that, and believe we can house that grant for, for a time. The grant runs through twenty-nine for the CLST grant, they call it. And again, just over a million dollars for that grant.
Oh, I should have read that.
Yeah, it's in there. Yeah.
Okay.
A few facilities updates. We do not have as, as much facilities work as has we've had in the past. We had COVID money. We used a quite a, a good portion of that money on some facilities projects, but we do have some things happening. I want to give the board a heads up on. We're in the middle of the VOTEC project at RHS. This is going to be a seismic project that will require two seismic awards from the state. We've received one. SMB James is our contractor. They are currently working on the east side of the VOTEC. And that is on track right now. I was there the other day. I tend to get a little nervous toward the end of this. Can this all, is this all going to get put together at the very end? There's quite a bit to do, but we're on budget and on track to have that completed by the beginning of the year. As a reminder, we will need to apply for and have plans to apply for the VOTEC west side of that to finish that project. These two and a half million dollar immediate occupancy seismic grants are, have been wonderful, but we anticipate needing, we'll need two of these grants, about the five million dollars, and then we'll probably need to kick in about a million and a half to finish that project. And then we'll probably need to kick in about a million and a half to finish that project on the RHS campus. We are eagerly awaiting approval for the the parking lot behind RHS. Just west of the softball field. As you've probably seen, the the property has had the house cleared. We were able to use the timber we fell for both RHS and we had additional timber that we got to Sutherland's Woodshop as well. But we are waiting on approval from the city still on that. Unfortunately, this project will not be ready to go by the time school starts. We are hoping to start, Knife River has the bid on this and we're hoping they'll start September one on this project. So it is, next week is registration. And so Dave's got a plan. Thank you, Mr. Vickery, for a a plan for a bit of a waitlisted plan. We're excited to have some additional spots. I was very hopeful we'd have them by the beginning of the year. We are behind on that unfortunately. And but that's been a bit of our, out of our hands, but we'll, we'll, as soon as that permit comes in, we'll get that work going.
Superintendent, I have a quick question. When did the city, when did we start having to work with the city? What month? Was it June?
We've been in contact with the city since the inception of the, of, actually, since the inception of the sale of that property. We knew that we wanted to develop that into a parking lot. The parking's very inadequate for students. So our students are walking, you know, long distances to be able to park. So the city's been aware, we had to do some work. We did contract with iEngineering to get some specific work for the city there. They've had, they have a a time limit for these and they're at the end of the time limit for that. So we're. It's been, we've been in this process for several months.
I, I don't get it. It's a stupid little gravel parking lot that we have to do something and it takes the city months. And and it's a safety issue for our kids.
Yeah.
And it's like we get pushed back and this is when people get irritated with their government. Something that should just not take long at all. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
So anyway, I personally apologize to the kids that they're not going to have it when school starts. It's going to be a couple of weeks out, but kids are resilient and they'll make it work. But gosh.
I could be wrong, but I thought there was like a thirty-day timeframe at our last meeting that ended between our last meeting and this meeting.
Yeah.
Did that somehow get extended?
Oh, the process sometimes requires, you know, agencies sometimes need more drawings and and different things. So I, I, again, I'm, I will get it done.
So we need to get them some grants or?
No, it's just that, I mean, I, I, I share the frustration that if we were focused on what's best for students, these things would happen faster. And we do have students that unfortunately have to park. They can't park at the school campus, which is a bit ridiculous. So we talk about attendance, talk about getting to school on time. We've got kids that are working. And it should be, it should be, shouldn't be that complicated. When we're asking kids to come to school, if they drive, because kids are working after school, to be able to say, we have a place for you on campus, you can park. And so I do share the frustration. We are working closely with the city. And unfortunate, it won't be ready by the start of school. That leads to some inefficiencies. It's more than just having the parking lots, all the processes of where kids are going to enter in. And it is a, it's a disruption not to have it done. I apologize if it's not done.
It might be a redirect to Principal Vickery, but what's, what's our amount of students that need parking spots versus what we have available?
Well, this will be about a hundred spots we can provide back here in this, this spot.
I just mean like current status with, are we full already for juniors and seniors or?
Registration.
Next week. Oh, next week. Yeah. Okay.
We are very confident that we'll have the way that once the parking lot is
Perfect.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
So I do have one other question. Will, you know, my concern too, as since this is delayed, we're entering into the winter months. It's going to be much darker. It's going to be raining and these kids are parking way away and walking. Do we have an idea that this will be finished before that time comes? Or do we kind of have an ETA or a, you know?
Well, there's the permitting process and there's getting the work done. So Knife River, I just talked to Tracy today. So we're, you know, September first is the hope, but they may be delayed on their project they're at right now. I mean, every, when we start moving into, goes back to the softball project, right? You're oftentimes depend, when you're doing groundwork and you're doing site work, it's, it's, some of this weather dependent. And so I think on this, it's a relatively, it's not a super complicated, which kind of frustrates me about the approval process. Because it's just not, we're talking about putting a rock down for kids. So this is not three-quarter, it's like one inch minus, they call it now. We need to go down with six inches of subgrade and put some rock on there.
Little guy doing. It's only six.
Oh, I'm sure that is. Oh, thank you. So I, I'm not, I'm, we'll get it done. I wish it could have got done for Dave and the process and kids to start, but. Okay, let me move on to the next one here. Real quick, it, hold your breath, Rod. It also involves permitting. So just take a deep breath here. As you know, we're working in terms of safety project on a vestibule at RHS. And so just talk about this again, real quick. Our, when we did the work on the vestibules for safety at the schools, most of those turned out really well. The RHS one is a bit complicated because the vestibule at RHS is more what you'd see at a vestibule like at a elementary school. We've got, you know, in and out of that building, a couple thousand people a day heading into the building. And it's in its current design, if you check in at the vestibule at RHS, once the bell rings and doors close, there's no one that really, you can say, I need to go to the office, but if you walk in the front doors past the vestibule, you can go any way. You can take a left and head right down the hallway. So we're going to be securing, we have a vestibule addition that the board has approved. The funding's there. We are still waiting for city permits. And 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 effectively county permits that runs through the city for the vestibule to be installed. It's being prefabbed right now. I'm hopeful that this will be installed before school starts. It comes in two or three pieces prefab, bolted to the floor, storefront windows to top on. So another, another holdup there has been the permitting process there. And just an FYI, we're, we're behind where I want to be, but I'm hopeful that can be in place by the start of the year.
Okay, so here's a question. Is there anything we can do as a board? Can we write a letter and ask them to please put this at the top of their list? I mean, this is pretty important.
It is important. I was on the phone with the city manager today. She was going to be meeting with one of the individuals that does some approvals. I always think the most powerful thing are student voices in these things, quite frankly, and parent voices. And we talk about issues of safety and having processes. I mean, we've, our community is well aware of safety issues. We've lived this in the community. To me, anything that that has to do with student safety should go to the top of anybody's list, quite frankly. And so I would welcome letters from the board. That may help and I can, I'd be happy to facilitate getting those to the city.
I have a comment. Said at last meeting. I think a hundred, a hundred kids that didn't get their parking spot in day one of school should show up at a city council meeting. Because they may not know what's going on, number one. Number two, do they not understand that some of these projects that we're doing, we can't do when school is in session? So we hold it to the summer and they know, you know, can you put a rush on it? It's, it's safety for kids. It's almost like they're penalizing us or something. I've never seen anything like it. And I think, you know, they need to know how this, this police, at least some of us directors are. That it's just crazy. I'm done.
All right, I'm almost done. A couple of things here, just a couple housekeeping things, a reminder. The twenty-first of this month in the PDC here, we have our new teacher orientation at eight AM. And then we will also welcome back our entire staff at the Rose Theater. We'll meet, start at the Student Center at seven forty-five AM on the twenty-fifth and do an all-staff kickoff for about an hour and I'm excited to see the board there as well. And then one final reminder, this is not necessarily school-specific, although we've been involved in some of the planning on this. The community is supporting a back-to-school bash entitled Building Tomorrow Together, which I'm really excited about. There will be two opportunities, one at South Umpqua, I believe it's the twenty-first on a Thursday. The first one will be RHS this Saturday. I'm seeing some rain in the forecast, but it looks like it'll be before ten o'clock, at least iPhone says that. There's going to be free physicals, free haircuts, I've heard, free immunizations. There's lots of, we want our students across the county to be able to come and just have some prizes, resources, free food and activities for families. So we'd encourage our families to join us there. And if they can't make this one at the following week, there'll be the similar event in South Umpqua. Yeah.
Just wondering, are there any posters that have made that can be put in windows of, you know, sometimes they, they put them in the door windows.
Yeah, there, there have been a number of them, actually, Chelsea. We've sent out to all of our families through Parent Square, information on the event. And it's gone to all schools across the district to share with their families. I haven't seen much around the community on this, but it is the first annual, never done it before. And so I think it's, sometimes these things have to get their legs to become institutionalized. But I hope it's something we can do every year where the community welcomes students back. And says, we're happy to have you back. Here's the services. And so if you're available, we'd love to see you there. Ten to three is when it'll be at Roseburg High School. Thanks, Joe, who's been a big help on this as well. And also Dave, thanks for your help at the high school for helping arrange this. Okay, all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Corden. We're moving into individual reports by directors. I'll start with Director Cubic. Do you have anything to add to this evening?
A couple of things to report. First of all, I want to just very briefly the visit to the fair and the wonderful, great participation in children's art and all the ribbons that are going back to our schools for one, two and three places. It was great. I spent probably an hour looking at, looking for every one of our schools and looking at the art from those schools. Really neat. And then also at the fair, the fundraiser for RHS rally. They did the bingo and every time there was an extra donation, they did a cheer. It was really neat. I sat there for a while too. Those two things. I had a question. We have a new track at Fullerton Four, which is absolutely wonderful. But the baseball backstop needs to be moved. And I wondered if we could look into that. It's, it's, can't be used because of the elevated track. It's in the infield. Roseburg High School Foundation activities recently, golf tournament was a fundraiser. The back-to-school bash that you're talking about, the foundation is involved in looking for donors and a people to be involved in supporting our Roseburg High School. And so there'll be a booth from the foundation at the event. That's it.
Thank you very much. Director Bishop? Okay. Director Crimmits?
Just, just looking forward to the year ahead. Got a lot of good things in store for the kids. And I think the family incorporation is going to be so important this year. So anything that any of us can do towards that. I think we, it behooves us all to, to make sure that, you know, in our areas of influence that we encourage that kind of involvement.
Thank you. Director Hammerson?
Keith reminded me, yeah, kudos to the, to RHS for the, for bingo and the Dunkin Cheerleader. I did donate to the Dunkin Cheerleader, but I refused to participate because I just told them it was a conflict of interest. So, but yeah, that was cool at the fair. Thanks for reminding me. But yeah, I don't have anything.
Director Cotton?
I am looking forward to start of the school year. I think it's going to be cool. We do not respond and nor will I respond tonight to public participation tonight. But I am looking forward to some type of communication on, on the questions and the comments that were made. I think it's going to be important. I can tell you from a personal side of thing, I have a niece who lives in North Dakota. She'll be a senior this year and boy, can she wrestle. She is, I, you know, I don't think there's any, you know, you don't want to get into it with her. So I know it's very popular, but I'd like to just get some background on it. See what's going on, please.
Thank you very much. I would like to give a special thanks to Track Coach Nathan Ekman for pursuing the purchase of track equipment from USA Track and Field Outdoor Nationals. And for the generosity of Dale Farmer and his daughter, Michelle Stanley from Champion Car Wash for making the purchase possible. So they virtually got brand-new equipment for our high school. So we're very thrilled with that. So. So I would say at this point, all regular business before the board is concluded and barring no objections, the meeting is adjourned.